Welcome, everybody, to our workshop meeting tonight. And thank you so much to Matt Funk, our auditor, and Sheriff Jensen for being here to talk about.
Turn your mics, everybody.
Oh, yeah, turn your mics. Mine doesn't have a green light. Oh, wait, I have to turn it on. There we go. Okay, thank you. So, we're just going to start right in and turn the time over to Matt to talk about. The main focus of this meeting is to get a handle on our revenue projections so that as we look at the different departments' expenses and the budget that have been requested, that we can get a decision or get an idea of where we're at in the middle. Is that a good?
Fantastic.
Okay.
I asked Sheriff Jensen to come to speak specifically with regards to his revenues. So, I'm going to do this a little bit backwards. Rather than starting in general and going specific, I think I'd like to look at his department specifically, and then we'll back up and look at things generally. So, Sheriff.
I just need a few people. Thank you. Okay.
Do I need to scroll through it, or is it, let me just talk about it?
Whichever you want.
Can you go to specific line items? Like, it's all, I think all your stuff is pretty much on that same page.
That is. I think that's pretty much all of my stuff.
Page two.
Yeah, okay. Okay. Well, I do appreciate Matt giving me invitation to come talk about ours. There's, I'm hoping there'll be a pretty significant increase for us. I think last year's revenues were about 7.9 million, and this year, or going into next year, it'll be about 8.4. The biggest increases with that, well, there's a couple. The school district contract, just, you guys have seen those. We've got the three-year contracts, and that's going up pretty substantially, $4 or $5 an hour for all the hours that they have. So, they literally went from about $139,000 in one year. I think this year's school is $640,000. I think the numbers that we gave, I can't see it up here maybe, but still on here. There was a change from the initial numbers that I had submitted to Matt because we had changed the contract with the school district. Cash County School District. Okay, that's 615, 660. That one's actually 640. If you remember, it was a few months ago with the Guardian program with the school district that we had request, with the addendum to their contract, there was going to be an additional $158,000 unchanged. We pulled that back. We've got to do some different things with the law that lets that be our employee rather than the school district's employees. So, we canceled the addendum to that contract. So, I took that 157 out of the revenues and also pulled it out of next year's budget. So, it won't be any hiring done until after the session's over with, and we can see if we can get that one sentence changed in the bill. The other big increases for me are going to be mainly from the jail. I'm not up here, but I can just give you some historic numbers. And this has been a ton of work with the state over the years with the jail contracting and our daily rates. Up until about three or four years ago, we basically got decimal dust from the legislature that came to inmate housing. Once the session was over, this looked at how much money we got left. I mean, every year, we got like 17 cents extra a day for inmates. So, I mean, there would have been a big fight and a big push. So, the Sheriff's Association, four years ago, we actually got in the first of the budget. So, when the governor turns in his budget, jail contracting budget figured out basically the same way that school and pupils are figured out. So, we're the first in the budget, and we're going to see those increases. And every time the state changes it, the daily rate, we're based off the state's daily rate, we'll see it increase. This year, for us, it was seven and a half percent from what it was last year. And we'll, I would suspect, we'll see, we'll really see that every year. Their costs aren't going down any different than our costs are going down. So, with the...
Which one of the, is it the jail inmate housing, or is it?
There's a, let me get down to that right line here. I'm reading off my paper, and you guys are reading off the screen. So, let me pull down to that one. So, the inmate housing, there's a couple of different ones. So, there's, we'll do condition of probation. I'll just start with all the housing stuff and move down. So, the jails fees, condition of probation, that's paid once a year. That's done on a five-year average, and then the state just pays it out what it is. So, this year, it's about $260,000, and that's based on how many inmate days we had from somebody who was put on probation. In lieu of going to prison, they may be spent 90 days in jail. So, we get paid for those 90 days. If APMP arrests somebody for a probation violation, they go to jail, we get paid for each one of those days. But the big number is sentenced to jail in lieu of prison. That's where we get the COP. So, we won't even know what that number is until November, December, usually when they cut the check. But on the averages that we have has, I think it'll be a little bit more than 260, but we'll be right in that ballpark of 260,000 on the average. The next one down is jails with Department of Corrections for 2.7 million. That's just really based on the number of inmates that we have in the jail. So, for, is this this year's?
Is that what's projected for '26?
Pardon me?
Is that what's projected for '26? Or is that what you project for your '25 number? I think these are '26 numbers, aren't they?
These are '26 numbers.
That's what you project you will bring in in 2026?
2.7 million, and that's based on how many inmates that we have. That number will be a little bit different. We don't have great programming in our jail. The state, we get on a, there's three different rates for state inmates. There's the base rate that all of us get for an inmate, which is $84.52 a day. If we have therapeutic-type treatment, like sex offender treatment or drug rehabilitation treatment, there's like an extra $14. That rate's $102 a day. And then if we have basic cognitive treatment, like getting your GED, personal finance, that's $90 a day. The bulk of the inmates we get are the 84.52 a day, the base rate. Some of those, depending on what the state gives us, might be the $90 range. And that number's based, a little bit low because I don't want to overshoot this, on about 80 to 82 inmates at any given time from the state. Our average has been more like 85 to 90. But I don't want to overshoot that. I'd rather have more than come in short. So, I did underguess a little bit on what the revenue from the state would be. So, the next one is we're going down the list. That was that one. So, we can go to inmate, let's go to the feds for the next one. Feds are kind of the same thing. We contract with the federal marshals. Their daily rates have gotten a lot better than what they have been. They were at 53.93. We renegotiated the contract, and we're 84.52 for marshals. We can only relook at that contract every three years because that's how the feds do it. And that's based on really the whole, the entire sheriff's office budget. It takes into account utilities and wages and all of it, and then they just break it down. So, Davis County gets like $104 a day just because their cost and budgets are bigger than ours. But we're about 84.52. I tell them they can have 50 or 55 beds. The number that I've given you guys will be at about 45, but they really have been more around the 50 range. But I can't control the number of inmates, so I always try to shoot a little less than, or try to guess what it's going to be. But what federal inmates are, are there anything for the marshals, the DEA, the FBI, ICE? It's all the same rate if anything coming out of the federal court system. And it's all the same rate regardless of what agency we're holding you for.
Do you have any ICE? I know that's been kind of a big controversy lately, but...
The 287? You know, right now, we don't. That's only been a tentative agreement with them. It really changes nothing that we do. There's not a separate contract that deals with ICE. ICE falls under the federal marshals' contract, so it's the same rate for an ICE detainee or an ICE inmate as it is for the federal marshals. So, how that really works and why really nothing changes is they're just looking for bed space, and that's going to be the biggest problem with all that. It's not just with the immigration, it's for the feds in general. There's really only statewide with all the sheriffs in the entire state, about 300 or 400 open beds that are available to the feds. When you take all the county inmates and then the state gets contracts for the beds that they want, there's not very many beds available for the feds to have. Currently, the law is right now, and it has been my entire career, is if somebody comes to jail and is booked on a state charge, if they can't prove citizenship, we have to contact immigration. That is the law, that's always going to be the law. Even this 287G, the only thing that changed with that is maybe we did the homework, but still had to contact ICE. They're the only ones that can put a hold on somebody. They're the only one that can start the immigration process. It really doesn't change anything that we do. So, we haven't seen any of that. Nothing's official with that yet. We're still doing what we've always done, just following the state law. And if somebody is booked on a new charge into our jail, if we can't prove citizenship or they can't prove citizenship, we contact ICE, and ICE does their homework.
And I think in an email, you said there's an eight-hour training or something for your...
We haven't even, yeah.
If you opt into it, is that...
Yeah, we haven't, I haven't heard another thing back from ICE since all that. So, if we do decide to do it, they would give us an eight-hour training, and all that really does is lets us into their database system so we can do the research. But even at the end of the day, they, we can't put a hold on anybody immigration. It still has to be ICE that does that kind of thing. But that's just kind of stalled right now. I'm not real happy with ICE. None of us are statewide. Not that we don't support them, and we support public safety and what they're trying to do. But at their administration level in DC, they sent out letters to about every county in the entire country offering $50,000 bonuses to hire deputies away from sheriffs to go work for immigration. It's like, that's the kind of partnership that you want to have. We're not so hip that we want to be that great a partner. So, everyone, every sheriff in the state has kind of put the skids on doing anything different than what we've been doing in the past.
I think Rich County lost several.
What's that?
I think Rich, didn't you say Rich County lost?
Rich County lost a few.
A few.
Well, Rich County had something to quit. I think Washington County, I think 10 of their deputies had received letters for immigration with that $50,000 signing bonus. It's a mess, and if that's, that has nothing to do with the people in our state or the agents on the street. That's an administrative decision. But if that's, their administration's the one that makes the rules, and if that's their idea of a partnership, it's not a very good, it's not a very good partnership. So, we'll keep doing what we're doing. Nothing's official with them, but we'll keep following the state law like we have. There's more, there's more need for beds in this state than there's even beds to offer. So, we're going to use every bed that we have for contract, whether it be to the state or the marshals, and we'll keep the jail full because it is, it costs the same to run that jail whether there's 200 inmates or 350 inmates. So, we just as well use every bed that we have and get the revenue that we can while we can get it. So, that's with the, with our current load right now, I'm guessing about 1.96 million with the feds on their contract for next year, and that's keeping them at about 45, 50 beds. It's actually been a little bit higher than that, but again, I'd rather shoot a little bit low than, than come in short. Bailiff is another, this is another battle we've had, and it's getting better. So, by statute, being the sheriff, we have to be bailless for district court. They pay us about 36% of our actual cost, what it takes to be in district court. So, as an association, we're doing the same thing with court bailiffing as we've done with the courts or we've done with the inmates, is we're going to get a formula that's built that goes right into the governor's budget, so it's not decimal dust at the end of the day. But we actually got a pretty decent increase this year from $339,000 to $409,000 for this year's contract. So, that's a pretty good increase, and I would expect that we'll see pretty good increases on that for the next several years. The other increases that we have, and they're not huge, is working with the cities on their contracts. So, give you the 10-second version of that. When I took office in '15, those things hadn't been looked at in years. So, the way we work contracts is they pay for a certain number of hours, we provide a certain number of hours. We were giving them way more hours than they were paying for. So, I've kind of done it in three-year spurts. If like three years, we're going to get the hours up to what, so they're paying for the hours that they're getting, and we've reached that point now, we're in good shape, now we're going to work on the cost per hour for the next three years. So, I think about an $80,000 or $90,000 increase every year on the city contracts for the next three years until we get that back to what's even, what's fair and square for the cities and for the county.
Which number is that, Chad?
The city contracts?
Yeah.
My screen just went blank, so I don't know. Can you pull it back, huh?
Obviously not the bailiff one, that's only $3,500.
It's closer to the top. It's under, it's 22,000, special protective service contracts. About the fourth or fifth one down. I don't know what happened to my screen.
Oh, there it is. It's like a million one.
Million one.
1,195, that's...
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, and that one, like I say, for the next four years, we'll see increases in that over time, too. But that's really the increases. We've seen some pretty good increases with like the jail phones and the tablets and the commissary of the jail. We've seen some pretty good increases in that over the years, and that's just basically based off usage from the inmates. Outside of that, I think that's the increases, there's not like a lot of decreases. I did ask Finance in there, I think you'll see in your paper, is rather than just saying sheriff's fee, just having it be a number, that could be anything. That could be what we charge for probation, that could be grandma request, that could be, I don't ever know exactly what all that numbers are. So, I think this year, I haven't seen the final product, but it's going to be, you'll see sheriff's fees, probation fees, civil fees. So, as we collect the revenue, I know which, which of those departments are bringing in the money. So, probation fees this year, we're estimating that's going to be somewhere around $90,000 in what our probationers are paying to be part of our system.
Okay.
So, outside of that, everything kind of pretty much stayed the same. The inmates are always going to be the biggest thing, and I always kind of underestimate those because I don't want to, I don't want to base a budget off a number that's false. I'd rather have more at the end, have a bonus than less, and try to figure out what happened to $2 million or why we didn't get $2 million. But it's, it's always a work in progress, and we'll, we'll keep banging away at the state, and they should pay for the services that Cash County's providing them. And we've made some, some good headway with getting it early and getting in the governor's budget and not fighting over the 17 cents at the end of the session. That's a lot of work for nothing, really.
Thank you so much for all your keeping on top of all this, Sheriff. Does anyone have any questions about the sheriff's, the public service revenues specifically?
Can, it's hard, we're used to seeing this side by side with what the previous year is. Do you have an idea of what the increase is over...
From 7.9 to 8.4.
Oh.
So, in 2024, we were six, about 6.9 million in revenue. 2025 this year, about 7.9, and next year, about 8.4.
Oh, okay. So, projecting it up.
Yeah, so, and that is really coming, most of that increases are coming from the state with renegotiating all those housing contracts and the courts and probation. That's the bulk of the increases.
Okay.
Is that 24 number your budget number or the actual at the end of the year?
I'm not sure. I just have a, I just kind of keep track of a year to year. I don't have the actual year end. That was what was anticipated for those years. I think we've been close. I won't think it's always perfect, but I think we've always been pretty close.
Thank you.
Yeah. Anybody else, questions for Sheriff Jensen? Okay. Thank you so much.
Working on the 2026 budget has certainly been educational, and it has given an opportunity to go back and look at the 2025 budget as well. And I wanted to take five minutes and talk about that subject, the 2025 budget. As you can see, I've highlighted, or maybe you can't see, it's difficult to see, but I've highlighted three rows there. The first is property taxed RDA agreements.
Do we have that?
Do we have this paper in our, in the email?
Was this emailed to us?
I don't believe, I don't know that it was.
Is it the requested budget report, or is...
It is, yes.
You're looking at 2020?
Yes, it is. The, it is the requested, the March 8th, or excuse me, August 8th, 2025 requested. It was emailed to me.
Yeah, that's the name of it. It's in that email. It's dated 8/8/25.
Thanks, Keegan.
Yeah, got it.
So, this is exactly what was, what was sent.
Yeah, there it is.
With regard to the RDA agreements, I got looking into that because I was curious what in 2026, I've got to get educated, what that 422,000 is. I spoke with the tax director, Diana Schaefer, and we believe that is an error. RDA agreements don't bring in revenue to the county. RDA agreements cost the county revenue. So, two things. One, I'll be speaking with the staff, and we'll be removing that 422,000 from the 2026 requested, but you'll notice that there's 450,000 sitting there in the 2025 budget that I don't believe is going to be there. In fact, if you look at 2025 actual, you'll see that that revenue line is zero. I think that that's, that's an error. And to be quite candid, that's 450,000 of revenue that I believe we were planning on for the 2025 budget that I don't think you're going to see. I don't think we're going to see. I should question.
Is it an actual cost, or is it just not a...
This here is revenue we expected, and we're not going to see any revenue.
Yeah, it's a non-gain.
Exactly. RDAs don't, don't generate revenue.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But it was added into the 2025 budget as...
As revenue.
Revenue.
Right.
Just to clarify that statement, RDAs don't inherently generate revenue, but I think the purpose of it is to invest in something that's going to pay back in property, in the form of property taxes or something.
Eventually.
That's the...
Sales tax sometimes.
Yeah.
That's the, that's the, yes, that's the, that's the theory.
Yeah.
That's certainly the theory. But as, in speaking earlier with Council Chair Goodlander, she pointed out two numbers that concerned her. Again, we're still in the 2025 column. We're looking at sales tax, transportation, that's that $3 million number, and we're looking at sales tax, public safety, that's that 6.6 million number. And Sandy pointed out that that seemed a lot higher, that $9.6 million. She had not anticipated that we were going to see that in 2025. So, I went back into 2025, and I took a look at that number myself. And let me pull up one different sheet here.
And just for context, we talked about, we only did that tax from April through December, so we only had three-quarters of the year. We projected that it would give us about $9 million a year, but we were only going to see 6-point-something this year, anticipating the $9 million next year. So, that's, when I looked at that, that didn't look correct to me.
Yeah, and I met with Alma, and we went over the number. We, as Sandy pointed out, we did not have our ducks in a row to collect any of these taxes for first quarter. So, we started our tax collection for these two items in second quarter, that would be April. We have collected, and the state has reported to us for April and May. So, I only have two months to go off of, but those two months are right here.
Can you make that bigger? I can't see them.
Would you like me to? Yeah. Sorry, just a second here. That is not, here we go. I'm writing the result. There, hopefully that's a little bit easier to see. So, in April and May, we collected on average each month $641,000. If we take that $641,000, and again, that's a small sample size, but if we take that and multiply that by nine months, then together, we would expect, based on that small sample size, to see $5,769,000 of revenue in 2025. $5,700,000 in 2025. We budgeted, however, for $9.6 million in revenue in 2025. So, you're looking possibly, and again, it's a small sample size, but I'm concerned that you're looking at a shortfall of $3.8 million in 2025, plus that 450,000 of RDA money that's not coming in. So, I know we're here to talk about 2026, and I'm talking about 2025, but I'll quit talking about 2025 now that I've delivered that news.
But here's the thing, I just, we were so clear when we talked about that, that our projection, I mean, we projected 6 points, I believe it was 6.6 million that we thought we would get out of the three, the three-quarters of the year. I don't know how the $9 million got into our budget projections for this year.
Well, part of the problem...
We talked about it a lot.
And I wasn't here for that. I hadn't been, I hadn't taken office yet, but I did watch a lot of this happening on YouTube. And a lot of this was under significant time pressure in December of last year. And a lot of calculations were made on the fly in this room at this podium. And hopefully, that's something we're going to try and avoid this year by having this conversation starting in, in, in August. But, but yeah.
We thought we started last year in August.
I thought you were going to suggest we get a whiteboard so we can make it more obvious when we're doing in-the-moment calculations.
Right, we did start. Okay, so, so are those 2025 actual numbers, those are not correct either, are they?
These are 2025, so that column is 2025 budget. Column next to it is 2025 actual. But keep in mind, we're only eight months into a 12-month year. So, if you...
How much does it lag on the collection from the state?
On sales tax, two months.
Two months. We only have through May.
So, when it says $3 million actual, that's through...
May.
May.
Three, sorry, was you...
No. $3 million is the, that's a different sales and use tax. That, that part is correct. It's the one, the two below, the transportation and the public safety, that was the new tax that we implemented this year.
So, if we add those two together...
1.5.
Yeah.
But that's not actually true because it's been about 600. See, that's, that's where I, the, if you look at those, and we talked about this earlier, Matt, the public safety should be 75%, and the transportation, 25%, so those ratios can't be actual.
Also, that total wasn't the same as the total that you showed us just a minute ago, right?
Yeah, so, go back to where you did the 600, that you showed that it was like 600,000, or six, yeah, 600,000.
Yeah.
Okay. So, May transportation was 160. What was, oh, that's, is April and May together?
I've added them together so I could get, get an average, yes.
Okay.
April and May.
So, that should be more closely reflected in this 2025 actual.
That's what I'm saying, yeah.
Correct?
But the 2025 actual is a lot, yeah.
It should be closer to like 480 in one instead of the 719 and the 854.
Right.
Right? So, and I know that there's maybe a difference between the state tax commission numbers and what we actually got deposited, but it shouldn't be that far off. That, that just doesn't make sense.
And it's, it's certainly feasible that, so these numbers that you're seeing here are collected with two-month delay. Getting them into CASL and making the journal entries could very well be why we haven't, we have a...
So, then...
So, this could be accounting for part of June, then essentially is what you're saying could be the case?
They don't send a check till two months later. Like, they just send one check, and it's two months. So, we haven't got a June check yet.
Okay.
We'll get June at the end of August.
So, with regards to 2020, sorry, did I...
Well, just one more thing. So, what I'm worried about in 2025, we felt like we balanced our budget by raising taxes to offset what revenue we, are we, are you telling me that 2025, we're going to be that much short in revenue, that $3 million?
That's an additional...
Plus the 420, 450.
420 to 450, so like...
In addition to whatever else we've taken from fund balance during, for budget openings this year.
Yeah. That's right. Yeah, sobering.
Yes.
Is this just taking into account the increase that was voted on two council meetings ago?
Mm-hmm.
The, yeah, the COLA.
The, well, we haven't gotten to that part yet. This is just revenues. We haven't talked about expenses yet.
Well, I mean, when you're talking about the shortfall, but yeah.
Let's talk about that COLA.
Okay.
With regards to the COLA, the one thing I wanted to bring up here is our property tax revenues. And normally I do this on my other computer, but let's just see if we can grab this data for a second.
I just don't know how that nine million dollars got in there. We were, we talked about it so many times. It's six point, we projected six point something, six point two.
Well, all the public safety got all of it.
All right, so for property tax, we now know for twenty twenty-five, we have a solid estimate of what we're going to collect. This comes from the state and the number that we want to look at is this twenty-one million dollars down here in the corner. That is the property tax that we're anticipating. And we, and there's, there's a reason that we don't know some of those values. We don't know what new growth is going to be. There's a couple of other variables that we don't know, but the state in the last couple of weeks has issued those. One variable that they have made clear to us is this new growth. The new growth number for twenty twenty-five is five hundred ninety-one thousand, nine hundred and thirty-six dollars. So that's new growth in property tax above and beyond what we anticipated. So it's, it's this value that I look for first when I'm looking at the COLA costs. And the COLA costs fortunately are coming in less than the new growth costs. So the new growth costs for this year and what we saw last year, of course, I couldn't speak to last year's, last year's COLA, or last year's budget, so I won't. But the new growth did cover the COLA for the non-Sheriff Department.
One we just gave in August.
One that we just gave.
It'll be covered by this new growth.
That was covered.
What's the disparity between them? Where the, like, the COLA costs how much and the growth is how much?
Yeah, the COLA was four sixty.
The COLA was four sixty. Sheriff Jensen was able to come up with ninety-eight thousand dollars in his budget to offset some of that cost. So with that, we're, we're down into the high three hundreds.
Okay.
On the COLA. And, and that's.
Trying to do the math of then our, what our shortfall is and figure out what the.
So the.
Probably already calculated that. And you're going to tell us, so I'll just be quiet.
Yeah, no, the, the, the new growth on property tax more than offset that COLA cost. On the other hand, we've taken more out of fund balance over the last two quarters.
Than that.
So we, we'd still be, we'd still be upside down. One comment I would make going forward into this budget cycle, it would be nice, I think, if we planned on the reality, which is we're going to be taking money, some money every quarter, above and beyond what we budget here, and I think it'd be wise if we were to budget some number. In, in my private calculations, I had put aside eight hundred thousand dollars as an example of.
For the budget opening.
Based on what I see on the last two budget openings and, and what I think we're going to see in this next budget opening, I think would be wise to plan on six to eight hundred thousand dollars in more budget costs than we anticipated at the beginning of the year.
Now, wouldn't we do a budget opening, there's a truth in taxation?
No, there's, there's, well, there's a hearing, there's a public hearing.
Yeah.
But there's not a truth in taxation.
Okay.
Unless you're raising taxes.
Right.
We're just doing a budget opening, saying we're going to.
We only do at the end of the year if we're going to do it.
Which we only do at the end of the year, that's right.
We have a budget opening every quarter.
Right.
With things that people haven't anticipated or changes that have been. It'd be nice to go through a year with no budget openings, say, okay, we did it right and we're done, but.
Yeah, yes, I admit, it would be, it would be very nice. Those are the key.
Sorry, on that last screen, did you show what our total shortfall is what you project for twenty-five?
That, that number right there?
Twenty, is that for this budget year?
I didn't want to get to that until next week.
Oh, okay.
But, since you asked, our revenues, if you look at line six on this spreadsheet, our revenues on the, what is specifically called the requested budget, the budget that I sent out to you and to the executive a few days ago, our revenues are seventy-eight million, nine hundred and thirteen thousand, nine hundred and one dollars.
For next year though, not this year.
That's for twenty twenty-six.
Twenty-six.
Oh, okay.
However, in that seventy-eight million dollar revenue figure is the assumption that we're going to use fund balance of seventeen point six million dollars. That is because the Senior Citizens Center snuck in there with a fifteen million dollar brand-new center. I think that that fifteen million dollar expenditure is unlikely to survive strict scrutiny coming from the council. I just don't think we're ready yet to discuss that. We haven't got back the studies that are, that are out, even if.
It's not going to be in the tentative budget.
So since it's not going, and I made that assumption.
Don't hold me to that, but that's the current, as of today, talking with, yeah.
So I made that assumption, so I took out the senior, the new Senior Citizens Center.
That was my first question, is we haven't even completed the studies, you know?
So, yes, if, that would bring us to two point six million. But keep in mind that we, gotta find the spreadsheet, these numbers right here for sales tax are probably still a little high. They're high for twenty twenty-five, we just had that conversation, but they're still high for twenty twenty-six and we need to fix those. So.
Okay.
I went in and said, well, let's fix those right now. What, what, what number does that, does that give us? And I plugged in a possible mid-year, you know, the cost of our mid-year openings at eight hundred thousand dollars because I was curious what kind of shortfall we might be looking at, assuming that there were no other budget cuts and I have, oh, four hundred or five hundred thousand dollars in budget cuts that I'm looking to discuss next week, and no other budget increases.
So does this have any increases for, from the Compensation Committee?
No.
It, it does.
This number assumes, this number assumed, we didn't have that data, so we assumed twenty twenty-five payroll costs plus three percent.
So part, so a, a partial COLA.
Yeah, so if, 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 if the Compensation Committee came in at three percent or under, then yeah, that's good news, that's all it's going to be. But if you're coming in at three percent or over.
It will adjust that shortfall.
So can I ask a question? Why did we throw the Senior Center in there, but yet we haven't considered the fire district costs?
So let me, let me talk about that if I may. The, there are three levels of budget, basically. There's a level-two budget, a level-three budget, and finally the level-four. The level-two budget is, we have all the department heads come in with their numbers. What they think they want, their wish list, if you may, that's a level-two budget. That's these numbers right here. So these are the department heads' fever dreams. The level-three budget, or what we call the tentative budget, that's the executive's budget, okay? And in theory, the executive's supposed to come in and say, come on, guys, let's not get too wild and crazy. Something like that should come out at the level-three experience when, when we hear from the, the executive. But I don't know when that's going to be and you guys need timely information now. So I'm going off of, off of this. Finally, we'll get a level-four budget, which is the budget you, as a council, decide on. Okay, so your question is, how did the Senior Center get in there? Keep in mind, all these budgets are just what the, what the department head threw in, what they thought they wanted, what they, so why did she throw that in there? I'm sure she had a good reason. A lot of respect there, but I, we're, we're not ready yet to discuss that. And I think if and when we do, probably end up, if we end up going in that direction, I suspect that would be something we would bond for rather than pay for out of.
And there may be other departments that have, that one is just a large number.
That's a very large number, yes. I have several other departments that are on my, on my list. That's why I'm getting, that's why I'm talking about a half a million dollar in, in cost cutting, because I think there's a lot of fat.
So to review, you said we're in level-two essentially right now, which is, this represents the.
The tension that we have.
The, the, the department heads.
Yes, it, it does. The tension that we have is that if we're going to do a truth in taxation process, you, the council, have to make that decision essentially by the end of August.
Right, but what should precede that then is level-three of.
Yes, but statutorily, the level-three budget isn't due until October. That's the law.
Yeah.
And so.
It's too late to get.
That's too late, so we're forced to have this conversation based on information that is still fluid.
So I guess maybe Dirk could speak to if the level-three is imminent and, because he, it sounds like there are discussions, it sounds like this was being cut from it. Like, do, do you anticipate that's soon, that we'll see that before we have to do our part? Or do you think we're going to kind of skip level-three and go straight to four?
Right. We are willing to do whatever we can to get the best information we can to the council. The tough thing about the schedule this year with everything going on with turnover and whatnot, and the schedule is simply that the tough decisions and the very finite detailed decisions, those haven't been made. Or final, the final decisions on those sorts of things. And so I believe we can get to a great, we can get to a really good number that we could estimate the worst-case scenario, so to say, on what the total expenditures might be, given some really basic assumptions. So assuming that the council, or assuming that we put into the tentative budget what the Compensation Committee proposes or recommends. Assuming that we put in some sort of a guesstimate on insurance costs. This early in the game, Amy's still waiting to get those numbers back, but we could put in a guesstimate, and if everyone knows what that is, then when the real numbers come in, we just will know whether it's above or below what the, you know, what the guesstimate was. Primarily, I would say that my biggest concern at this point, and it, it's, it really has to do with all the work that Matt has had to do and that we met together as a small group of us trying to figure out, how do we get the budget before the council as soon as we can, is simply that Matt and Brittany said, the best way we can get the best numbers and, and get it into a system that we can work on is to put it back into the spreadsheets that, basically the system we used to use, and get it into Casell. And I've got department heads that, after some changes that Wes made, both to capital and to revenues, Matt's put in, and he has been working with departments, I believe, getting, trying to get from them, does this really look good or not? But then hand-putting them back into Casell, every year, it feels like over the last three years, we've come up with a, kind of a no crap moment in November or December. And you know what? That might happen again, but we're all working towards getting it to everyone as quickly as we can.
I thought the departments filled out all these numbers, their level-two numbers, in June.
In a different system.
But they're still, they were still lookable.
Wes's spreadsheets, and in addition, yeah, sorry, I didn't mean to cut you off.
You're correct.
I feel like we could have been looking at those individual, by individual departments. Those numbers haven't changed since June.
My biggest concern isn't as whether they've changed or not. My biggest concern is that we had them in one system. Also, some department heads have reported to me that Wes was making some decisions and I, based on, he was making the decision on what should be in there, not necessarily, not necessarily the departments.
Might not be the same as what they.
And on revenues as well. And so, all of that said, there's no reason to, there's no blame that needs to be made. What needs to be made is, let's get it as correct as we can as quickly as possible. And I'm interested in doing that.
So the quickly as possible part, will you indulge me for a sec if I just talk a little bit philosophically about roles and how I see everyone working in their capacities? So, well, the way I see it, Dirk and everyone on the council is, I see like the department heads going and, you know, the, the fire chief requests a shiny new truck, the, you know, the sheriff requests golden guns for everyone, and not that he would, but, you know what I mean? Like, that's the nature of it, and then I see the executive role or the executive team's role saying like, well, guys, this is how much we have to spend. You have this much, pick how, you know, you asked for a hundred, you have forty. What's the most pressing thing, right? And then, because you know what our goals are, like, we want to balance the budget, and then you make a recommendation to us based on, hey, we, we, we went back, this is what we cut after working with the department heads. Because I was on the council last year, but what I saw, the, the council was in a position where they had to say like, I don't know if this OSHA training is, if we can afford this, right? And that puts the council in a really tough spot because we don't work with the department heads as much. And what I want to avoid is being in the position where I'm cutting stuff in ignorance essentially, when an executive team has more insight and, and can work with those departments. So do we all agree, like philosophically, how that's, how it should work? And then if it's not working that way, let's talk about where the dysfunction is and how to fix it, because then I feel like we fix it permanently if we get to the bottom of where it's broken.
Yes.
And I think my assumption, and we talked about this last year, was that as soon as those departments, they all met with the, with Matt and someone from the executive team and said, here's our, here's what we need, did someone say to them at that time, hey, do you really need that truck? Do you really, you know, that, and, and those numbers were done in June, so, and, and I'm, like, I'm not trying to put this blame on you, Dirk. I just, I'm with, with Keegan. My assumption is that you guys had been doing that and making that a priority.
No, look, I was there in those rooms, generally speaking, not. In one case, I, I raised an objection to something, but generally speaking, there was not a lot of challenge going on in terms of what their capital requests were.
Which I don't think that's the auditor's role, right? I mean, I, I appreciate you looking out for that, but I don't, what I see the auditor doing is, is this, this is how much was asked for? Is this how much was spent and was it appropriated to the right box?
No, you're absolutely right. It was, it was the executives, it was, it was the department heads meeting with the executive's team.
And I think we've all been on teams where chaos ensues because there's a handoff and it's like, hey, Nolan, do you, do you have it? Do I have it? And then we fumble it because we're not sure who has it, or two people are working on something at the same time because they're not sure who's doing it. So I think if we establish roles and then hold people accountable who aren't fulfilling their roles and talk honestly and publicly about that, myself included. Like, I'm willing to be called out as well, but like, we have to make it work.
I could not agree more. I will state right now, those roles have not been agreed upon nor established at all, even according to what's in statute. And that's what I've been trying to kind of communicate over the last three years. But honestly, it hasn't been the best environment to be able to actually share those and get places. And I'm saying I'm part of that too, like, and so Matt's right. His, he didn't hear much in there. Our objections wouldn't happen in that meeting. We're not going to share our objections with the department heads when another elected official is in there. And we're going to look at those and figure it out. I'm actually more worried this year. I am actually thinking in my mind that this kind of discussion right here with the revenue projections, we need to be involved with those constantly, because whose revenue projections are they? In the tentative budget, there are. They're what we decide that we think they are. In fact, there's arguments in every government that has this forum, when the tentative budget comes out, where the auditor might actually say, now, just so everyone knows, I thought the projection was this over here, and then the governor changed it to this for whatever reason and let him defend it. And so we've, we've got to establish those roles. And I am happy to be, I guess, accountable for whatever, whatever anybody wants to say that I should be accountable for. But we've got, my biggest problem, or my biggest challenge and thought this year is that our revenue projections and everything we're facing is pretty dire, as far as what expected revenues we think we're going to have versus the actual cost of doing government. And I think we need to have some pretty serious discussions in the background, talking about what are our options for actually reducing expenditures? reducing expenditures in an organized and serious way, getting it into the tentative budget.
Yeah.
I've been through reduction exercises before in my career. They aren't hard to organize, they're hard to manage because of feelings and because of how hard that is to do. So I think we should sit down and talk about some of those options basically right now. And.
I guess, I guess I just, and we talked about this last year when we got to this point, was the assumption was that, that, that you guys had already been looking at each department and working with them, like, you know, what are you guys spending on this? How, I mean, that's, we can't wait until August to do that.
That some additional scrutiny had been done with the information that was given.
Yeah, cause there was.
Around two and a half occurred, essentially.
Right.
So, and I, and I know maybe that's not what's in statute, but I think that we've been pretty clear the last two or three years, like, that's our expectation, is that the, by the time we get to this point, that someone has fine-toothed, fine, been through those, those projections. Not, and, and not so much the revenue those come into, but, but let's look at our expenses. Can we, can we cut back? Can we?
Does the executive's office have all that information? Do you have what you need to make this review?
Well, yeah.
Great.
And.
By next week?
Yeah, that's what I was.
That's what's difficult.
I just need.
We.
Yes. Well, I don't believe a good complete tentative budget can be given to the council by next week. Not even close. What could, I think what we all could decide is what a good number of estimated expenditures would be. And that would give you the number, kind of a worst-case scenario, of what a, a possible tax increase could include. And that's not just gonna be the actual tax increase needed to cover a minimal, just covering our business, because I think that tax increase would be too great to swallow in one year.
Well, there's also.
Gotta figure it out.
The school district that's looking at a significant increase too. And I know not all, like, me, you and Barbara and Logan, so we're not affected by that quite so much. But proposing a pretty significant amount to people.
A lot more than what we would propose.
Yeah.
Cash county is?
Yeah.
Another one after the.
A hundred, they said it would average $160 per household.
For what?
I think it was over 20%, right?
Yeah.
28%.
28%.
Thanks.
And keep in mind.
That's on top of their, the things they just bonded for those two new middle schools.
Well, they, they just re, basically refinanced their debt for those two middle schools.
Continued the existing bonds.
And they need a 28% increase.
I was, I was just gonna say, keep in mind that our increases on how we're increasing our county government can be, especially in general fund, can be narrowed down to like a few potential positions that we're proposing to increase. That would be it. Uh, and then the normal cost of doing business of adding our basic percentages for personnel at the beginning of the equation. But those are just the costs of doing business. So.
If, if, if not raising taxes isn't an option, like, I'd love to get that message out sooner than later.
Right.
And, and like you said, work towards a number. If, if we don't think we can get 4.8 down to zero, what can we get it down to? And how are we gonna do that? And I think it's gonna lead to resentment if, if the executive office doesn't come up with that. And then in council, we're doing it on the fly, and then it's like, well, why'd you cut that? Because you didn't give me any guidance and I'm doing my best to keep taxes low, cause that's what I'm doing to represent my constituents, so.
Right.
Yeah, so I think that's, that's where I'm at with this.
Last year, we did not get a complete budget package from our office. And that is my goal.
I'd like to say, we go, we've gone through this every time for the last three years. Why hasn't the executive's office gotten it and tried to at least get us something this year? You know, we, it's very frustrating to us as a council to know that we have to have something done by a certain time. And all we get is an excuse that, well, we haven't had time to look at it. We haven't had time to really specify things. And here we are again this year. We're at the same spot we were three years ago. And I wish that we wouldn't have to go through this. That it's very frustrating to know that probably we're gonna be looking at a December deadline again because things aren't getting done.
I can absolutely guarantee that it will not be that late. I will do everything I can to make sure it's not. I am committed, and I know that the optimism may be not shared by all. This is going to be the best budget process we've had in the last three years. Why and how? Because we're just gonna get the information and work as a team to get it done.
Dirk, considering the, the deadlines that we're facing so imminently, how do you suggest we move forward?
I think we need to work all we need to this week to get a total amount of expenditures that we feel is the, I'm using the words worst-case scenario. But what we're trying to do is we're trying to build a case and work with your leadership, with Matt, with Andrew and anyone else who wants to come help us, to come up with, well, what's the maximum amount of tax that the council might even consider? I know you're not gonna have, be able to have a vote on that. But then we put that into the truth in taxation, uh, the notice. Keep in mind, it's either state or our own county statute that sets out the process for preparing the tentative budget. And that process says that the auditor shall give the executive a report after eight months of expenditures and revenues. And then we determine the tentative budget. And I am actually 100% on board that I think we can do it better than that. We, we can get a pretty good, we could put together a tentative budget before that, is what I'm saying. The schedule we've been following the last two or three years has been, is greatly accelerated compared to statute and compared to what previous councils have seen. Now, can we do it? Sure. And I, I am totally on board. So I am on board.
So, and, and this is another thing we have to consider. Are we putting this deadline on ourselves to save money in postage?
Yes.
I mean, is it worth it?
I think.
I think that's a fair question to ask.
That's what we have to say, is it worth it? Is it, like, this is a whole dumpster fire, is it worth it? Do we just pay for another thing of postage?
I think it's worth it. I think we can get an amount.
$30,000.
Yeah, it's $30,000, which is a significant amount of money, but, but if we can't really get good numbers, is it, is it worth it?
I think it is.
Okay, do you think we can have good enough numbers?
Yes.
And, and how confident, Matt, in the, um, revenue projections that you've given us? Are you, are you confident in the 2026 revenue projections that we have, since we've had skewed information for 2025? You feel like this is, this is corrected for 2026? As much as you can, cause of course they're projections.
Yeah, it's a projection.
As much as I can, given that they're projections. I'd, I'd like another, I'd like another week at it. So when I come, and I'm coming here again next Tuesday.
Yeah.
To discuss it, yeah. We may have updated numbers, but I think we're, we're as close as we can be.
Because again, statute does not require us to do it. It is us saving money and combining for postage.
Yeah, I think we also need to look at, again philosophically, like, are we cutting fat? Are we cutting down the muscle or are we cutting down the bone? Because like, we have to be willing to say, if we want taxes not to increase this much, like, that probably means personnel have, have to go. And so, like, I'd rather have those decisions now, so then again, it's, it's a collective decision. We know what we're doing, eyes wide open, and it's not, oh, the, the horrible executive team is laying people off or the council's just. That can pit us against each other and that's not what it's about. It's about making a responsible decision that looks out for the good of the most amount of people. And sometimes that means hard decisions, but let's be open and honest about what we're willing to do and what we want.
Doing that together.
And I think we'll probably have differing opinions on what that is, and that's okay, like, the public meetings to discuss that. But I think you probably need that guidance from us on how aggressive you need to get so you can do the small, medium, or large package or.
Right. Right. And honestly, going all the way back three years ago, there were arguments in, in, so to say, let's say logical arguments, and discussions about the council needs to be involved in building the tentative budget. And I was like, sure! Because involved means kind of knowing as things are going along and being informed. What are you thinking? What programs are you thinking of adding to and/or taking away from? There's no problem with that.
Yeah.
There's no problem.
How I look at us, and maybe you guys disagree with this too, is I look at us as like a board of directors advising a CEO and saying like, we wanna have an aggressive growth year and we're willing to take these risks, and, and that's a philosophy, right? Or we wanna play it really conservative, if we grow 3% this year, that's fine, right? Then like, the CEO goes back and knows, okay, if we're aggressive, I need to take some risks, I need to take some loans, I need to hire up, right? Like, I'm happy to provide that, but I expect the executive side to go out and execute on that vision. So I don't wanna get into the weeds of the details, actually.
Right.
Maybe, maybe in the past, some people have, or some people do, or maybe some people on this council still do. But me personally, that's not my area of interest.
Right, but let's be honest. They felt that they needed to because they didn't feel they were getting the right story or the whole story to begin with. Or they actually felt, I think it's accurate to say, that the executive wasn't doing our job to cull and to cut and to review and to be tough enough or whatever. And you know what? Those are okay feelings to have. I think what the department had struggled with the most were the December last-minute cuts that might not have been made with all the information. But again, even then, there was at least one council member that felt they needed to. And you know what? That is their right, that is, oh, that is, that is their role. And I honor that. And then what do we have? We have more communication than this year. We have department heads actually saying, can we figure this out? Dirk and David and the council, can we please figure it out so that we, um, just have a more organized approach? And then we've struggled with different things this year. But that doesn't mean that we can't come up with, I mean, it's gonna be tough, tough decisions. But it doesn't mean that I, I'm going to give everything I can to Matt, to the, and to the council to make sure you have what you need to make the best decisions. Period.
What do you need from us to execute, I guess?
In the future, in the next week, probably some behind-the-scenes discussions with different council members to say, we're thinking of going this direction. And then they might actually have to say, well, I can't speak for the whole council.
Yeah.
So good luck. And, um.
But I think if we bring those ideas then and we discuss them as a council.
Yeah.
Like, that's, that's the, that's the process.
I am, and what I am committing to this council right now is that it will be a complete budget package. It will include, um, a number on salaries and wages and benefits. It will include a number even on, um, sorry, on, on the insurance and benefit side where we may not know.
I thought that was a fixed number this year. It's 7%, like, they, they have a contract.
Great, alright, they committed to not.
Yeah, to not raise it this year.
Thank goodness.
I know.
But, and then a tax increase.
Mm-hmm.
And it'll, I'm committing to that. And, uh, gosh dang it, hold me accountable, I can't get my boss to do it.
Okay.
So, it needs to be a complete package though.
Yeah.
Because then you're, as a council, are able to up and down different things of that package from there.
I'd say reach out to us, and if you don't feel like you've got consensus, then say, I think you guys need to discuss this in a council meeting. But if you get consensus from us and you have a pretty good idea, then let's.
Yeah.
Move forward as fast as we can.
Yeah. I guarantee there will be places that if somebody wanted to take the, the, their right to, in a public meeting, really bash us over not getting super deep and detailed on a certain program, there's gonna be places where we might have not gone deep enough on, on some things. But we're gonna try. And it's, it's not a growth year. It can't be. It, it can't be. And I'm trying to, I'm not kidding, I'm trying to contemplate hiring freeze and this kind of thing. And then I think of all the struggle we have in development services. Now, they may not be as much general fund, which might save us. But it, we have to figure out ways to stop some of the growth and, and tough it out. Because we're, even under that, we're still gonna probably have to raise taxes.
And one other thing, I know we need to wrap this up so we can get ready for council meeting.
Yeah.
Just, I want you guys to all consider that we need to discuss in a future meeting and take a vote. Last year, when we implemented that sales tax, we only had three quarters of the year. And we designated 25% for transportation and 75% for public safety. This year, we'll have four quarters. If we continue with that percentage, it will bump up the percentage that goes to public safety, which was not our intent, that we may need to change those percentages with the state tax commission, which we have to do by the end of September. So if we wanted to say, if, if we change that to a 50-50 split for next year, that would keep the public safety portion the same. It would in effect make it the same, because they're 75% of three quarters of the year. Anyway, we'd have to figure that out exactly. But, but we wanted to give some more of that to the cog, but we need to change those percentages.
The dollar amount.
Cause we did it heavier, cause we knew it was only nine months.
Yes, and so we'll need to take that into effect and take that into consideration and change those percentages with the state tax commission. And if we want that to change January 1st, it has to be to them before the end of September. So just keep that in your minds, think about that, and we'll, um, have that discussion and take a vote on that before the end of September. Okay. Okay, anybody have some questions for Dirk or Matt? Thank you, this was so good. And let's, I think next.
So we're holding our ni- our, our August 19th meeting.
Let's keep, let's get some better numbers and let's.
I think we have to hold it.
Okay.
I think we do.
And the expectation is that the executive team will come with a proposal.
I, I, I don't think they're gonna have a tentative budget.
We won't have a tentative budget to hand over, but I say, why don't we aim for the next meeting then, after that?
Yeah.
I just wanna make sure we're.
You have enough to talk about.
Yeah.
We just need enough information to decide by August 26th if what we're, what number we're gonna give to the treasurer to send out in the mailing. And we can come back on that always. But we need to aim for something.
Yeah, reasonable to expect something, they'll come with something three quarters of the way ready next week.
Yeah. And, and Dirk, I have some ideas too. I'd love to sit down with you and give you some of my ideas and anybody else, so. Okay, thank you, everybody. Sheriff Jensen, thank you for your input, and we'll see you guys in 20 minutes.